All right, yeah, 7:01. All right. Call the 380th Planning Commission Meeting to order for College Place. Mr. Rickert, will you do the roll call please?
Carolyn's gonna do that.
Oh, all right.
Dennis Olson.
Yeah.
Brian Roth.
Here.
Ken Lauterbeck.
Here.
Monty Poomon.
Playman here.
Playman.
Thank you.
Scott Duncan.
Here.
Eileen Davis.
Here.
Randall Brenz-Moururet.
Here.
And John Rickert.
Staff's here. We also have Mike Rizzatello and Greg Dorn with us. And Carolyn Hall.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so first on the consent agenda. Is the only item? Yes. Consent agenda is the approval of minutes from our last meeting on April 17. Oh, we have two. Is that right?
Yeah, approve the agenda and then approve the minutes from April 17.
Okay, so... And we'll do both of those together. So, any comments on the minutes from April 17? I see none. Any comments on the consent agenda? I see none, so move for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved, sorry.
Second.
Did she catch you?
Second by Scott Duncan.
Thank you.
All right. So active agenda.
Can I vote on that?
Oh, sorry, I gotta do that. All right. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda and approving the minutes from our last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, so we pass 7-0. Thank you for helping me out. All right. The regular agenda, and we begin with the economic development element.
So, Mr. Rizzatello has taken this to our Economic Development Commission and then also through an approval by the City Council. And the plan is, is that this section would be incorporated into the comprehensive plan. So, Mike is here because he worked on it in great detail. So, he's here to walk us through it and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks, John. So, yeah, we worked through this with Economic Development Tourism and Events Commission for the last year. That's a relatively new advisory commission that the City Council approved. It hasn't gone to City Council yet, it's just gone to Economic Development and Commission, and they certify with the recommendation that it be brought here and then there for City Council. So, I'll provide an overview and just go through the pages, and then at the end of my overview or anytime if you have any questions, let me know. So, page one, it just has the title of it, "Economic Development Element," and then it has a summary of what you'll find in this chapter. So, information about the economy, policies and programs that could help build our economic development in the future. Policies that provide framework for leverage and tourism and promoting College Place as a destination, because another goal of the Economic Development Commission is tourism. That's why it's called the EdTech, Tourism and Events. So, they also work on creating community events and figuring out ways to draw tourism into our city. And then policies that seek to maintain a qualified workforce and promote live and wage jobs, so that's page one. Page two just provides a very generalized overview of the growth management pertaining to economic development. And just really, the goal of these sections is to detail how you're going to deal with population, employment for the said population, and then analyze your local economy for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. That's called a basic SWOT analysis, so that's page two. Page three, I think, is very interesting. So, that's a business district map. When I first started here at the city, the business districts weren't really mapped. Some folks said downtown, but there really wasn't like a general boundary to it, it was very open. So, with those College Avenue design standards, which I know that went through here, it also went through the Economic Development Commission. There was a discussion of what truly does constitute our business districts, and this was a resulting map of that. So, the general university district is in the blue, and that comprises most of university land. The dark green is the downtown district. There was a debate back and forth about whether all of College Avenue should be downtown or since the university is in the middle, if that constitutes the two business districts. The commission viewed it as a separation, and it would be better marketed as two separate districts. So, the downtown district goes from 4th and College all the way to the top of the hill is 13th and College. The reddish color up to the upper right, that's the Myra Road Business District, and that just comprises all businesses on Rose Street, as well as the Google Yum-Lay property, which is vacant right now, but has quite a bit of commercial business potential on it, as well as Home Depot, and then the property behind it that's going to be developed. The purplish commercial corridor to basically northwest of Myra and 125 is just the Commercial Drive Business District, and that just comprises all of the commercial lands around Commercial Drive. And then the last corridor in the lighter blue color, that is the Meadowbrook Business District. The general concept of the business districts, that part actually did go through City Council because that's what's on the wayfinding signage that you see around the community, because we had to come up with names so people actually knew where they were going. So, that part is on the signs, and that's really the background behind the business district concept, so that way we can market all of these areas as we're trying to get retailers and various workforce interests into the city. It's very helpful, because I'm using a lot of that information when I go next week to the retail convention in Vegas to recruit retailers. The next page, that just has an infographic as far as education, and then key facts of basically our commercial employment shed, and then businesses in the said general area of the city, and then employment. That actually comes from Esri Business Analyst, which is a data aggregation program. Next page. The first part of this plan, it's divvied up into several things. Baseline data, results of the survey, a SWOT analysis, which goes back to the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, and then the goals and policies, and we'll go through each of those sections as an overview. So, page five goes over population, and we've had pretty nice population increase study, which is good. We grew 11% from 2005 to 2017, which is great. B goes over equalized assessed value. We've been holding our own there. If you look between the years of 2005 and 2017, our equalized assessed value has basically gone up 61%. A lot of that's attributable to Walmart, Home Depot, a lot of the residential growth around here, so development's doing good in this area. Page six, details.
May I interrupt you and ask what that jump is from 2008 to 2009?
So, 2008 to 2009, from everything I can tell, that's a combination of some of the growth or around residential growth, and it looked like some ancillary store growth with some of Meadowbrook Plaza and some of the area across from the Home Depot, like where Valvoline is at and Banner Bank. So, it looked like that correlated with the addition of that, and then some of the property over by Commercial Drive.
Thank you.
Page six goes into the sales tax, and we've been studying there. There was quite a bit of a jump between 2012 and 13. I think that can be attributable to more aggressive marketing of that Meadowbrook Plaza, where they filled more of the vacancies there. That's pretty much why it enabled correlation, too, because there wasn't addition of a big box per se during that time. I just think it was aggregation of a lot of smaller businesses. So, the basic sales tax from 2005 to 2016, because the data on that lags about a year and a half from the state, so that's most recent. That's gone up about 68% between 2005 and 2016, so that's pretty good. D, that's an infographic from the Federal Department of Labor, that's our labor shed, and it just color codes areas where there's a concentration of jobs. So, as you can see, and it's no surprise, the two areas, they have the greatest concentration of jobs, really, is where Wal-Walla University is at on College Avenue, and then down in the Meadowbrook Business District, and that's a combination of Walmart, and then also all of the teacher positions down at Sager Middle School and College Place High School. So, it's all that. So, those are the two main areas where you see the most labor at. Next page. This is an infographic, again, from Department of Labor. This is the Labor Household Employment Dynamics Tool. I think I got that right. And that shows folks who live and work in the said community, and then folks who live outside the community and work in it, and then vice versa. As you can see here, about 469 folks live and work in College Place. And this data is a little outdated to 2015, because there's about a three-year delay in them publishing new data for this tool. They have 14.8% live and work for rural-type cities. That's fairly standard for eastern Washington, but it's always better if people are living and working in the same city, so that is something to strive for. Next page. Okay. Then there's various charts and graphs here. So, on page eight here, this is basically residents, so jobs for the residents in the city, and over time from 2005 to 2015, the jobs have gone up from just shy of 2,900 up to 3,100. And the common industry is basically educational services and healthcare, which is really no surprise for the area. Next page, this is workers, as in folks who work in College Place. And naturally, numbers are lower, because there's fewer jobs in the city, limits in general. The number of employees in the city has gone down slightly from 2005 to 2015, from just shy of 2,000, so 1944 jobs in 2005, down to 1928 in 2015. And then the largest percentage of the workforce has switched from retail trade in 2005 up to educational services in 2015. And I think this is attributable likely to a lot of trimming of full-time positions at Walmart than Home Depot. As the ages progress, they've been trimming their workforce some, so I think that's what attributes to that. E is the top employers in College Place. In Wal-Walla County, Wal-Walla University leads the pack altogether, 448 positions, and then Walmart at 338. And then after that, goes down to Banner Bank, the College Place School District, Regency at the Park, and then Home Depot and Andy's Market. And there could be some others in this one. This was the best aggregation I could find, because the interesting thing is you pulled this data from the State Department of Labor, but employment numbers between like what they had, for example, for Andy's Market and what truly existed, actually different. So, that's actually subject to debate, because in the original database, Andy's Market wasn't on the top employers. And then in talking with Jeff Lambert, who's on our Economic Development Commission, he reported that he felt they had more employees than Eagle Springs, and looking at the records, they did. For some reason, the State Department of Labor did not have that information in their database that was given to all cities. So, we're still finessing that one. Page 10 is top Wal-Walla County employers. The main ones is really a lot of the industry out in Burbank, which depending on how you look at, that can be greater a curse. It's great, because the county gets the tax revenue. It's a little bit of a curse, because per state, it isn't really helping the Wal-Walla micropodding region, it's really helping the tri-cities region. So, as far as making sure that there's a congruency between population and jobs here, that Burbank stuff really isn't helping. If you look at the folks who are working in a lot of those places out in Burbank, it's tri-cities people for the most part. So, that's a little bit of a problem, that a lot of the bigger industry is out there, and I think that that points to we need to work with the port to hopefully get some development teed up in this part of the valley. But this is the top county employers for 2017. Next page. Median household income. This was from American Community Survey, 2012 to 2016. They do an average over a five-year period, a random sampling of households. I ended up pulling this data for a lot of the cities in the general region. Of those in the general region, we were the fifth lowest. The lower ones are Prescott, Starbucks, Dayton and Milton-Freewater. So, we were above them, but still below like Wal-Walla, the county as a whole, the state, Kangal and Weitsburg. So, that's something we need to work on again to try and get more jobs in this part of the county. It does provide some opportunity, though, for example, because of the median income, how low it is, we were able to get the opportunity zone designation. So, that's a tool we'll be able to use to hopefully get investment in the city. G just goes over the labor force for the county. It's increased from just shy of 29,000 in 2005 to 28,622 in 2017. Next page. Unemployment rate. We have a pretty low unemployment rate here. It peaked around the 2010-2011 era. It was a little bit of a delay from like other areas, because again, we have institutions here like local government and penitentiary, where typically, when they shed folks, there's usually a one- to two-year delay from a recession. So, that's why it's a little bit delayed from other areas who'd feel it closer. But, yeah, we're basically down below 5%, and when you're down below 5%, that pretty much means people who are easily able to work are working, because I know we have problems finding like police officers and folks here, so it's a very tight employment period. And then H, drive time market information. That's at the end of this document, but there's a program called Esri Business Analyst, and they basically aggregate data by drive time, because when retailers determine whether or not they'll locate in your city, and it's also hotels and restaurants, they want to know basically the income, the population, a bunch of statistics within 20, 40 and 60-minute drive time sheds. So, that's what that report does. I'll go over one piece of an interesting report, the end of it, near the end. Next. Issues. This was really aggregated via the survey that was sent out. We actually sent out the survey through the web and then in our newsletter, and then in addition, we also went through exercise where the public could participate in the Economic Development Group. They worked through it as well. So, just to call attention to some of the responses, create a little infographic in this program called a Wordle, where you're able to basically put words into different shapes to call attention to some of it. So, A here is strengths. A lot of folks felt that the churches, our new Main Street, all that work, the small-town feel, fire and police, schools, Wal-Walla University, Rogers Bakery, the mountains, weather, Andy's Market, and positive reputation, those were all strengths. Next. Weaknesses. No sit-down restaurants, lack of variety of businesses, lack of retail synergy on the Main Street, lack of gas stations, the bedroom community perception, the issue of the tri-cities Wal-Walla discrepancy, where for a long time, when you're recruiting retail, the magic number within your 20-minute drive time shed is about 70,000 people. And for many years, we were just below that, which meant that even though to folks living here, it seemed like it would make sense all in the world to locate a hotel or a sportsman's warehouse on paper that didn't pencil in, that's why they were on the tri-cities, and people would spend all their money there. We're getting near that 70,000 tipping point, which is why I believe you're seeing a lot more businesses look at the area. But that was mentioned as weaknesses. Opportunities is next. For opportunities, and a lot of this will come up in the goals and policies that we'll go over at the end of this. Industrial growth, there is actually a desire by folks who do warehousing, food processing, technology for spaces, and there's a lack of spaces in certain areas, so that is an opportunity. The redevelopment of Blue Mountain Mall, lodging, the fact that it's a family town, the tech sector land, that's an opportunity. The easy access to highways, the growing population, close proximity to Wal-Walla real estate, and then space for businesses and healthcare. Broadband, food industry and our Main Street are all opportunities. Next. Threats. The threats that came out of the surveys with some foreclosures, the length that the construction project occurred on College Avenue, neighborhood sanitation standards, which we've been improving with our extra review of code enforcement, the loss of Adventist Health, stay-at-squo, crumbling local roads, and then the police and fire department being short-staffed, and then the no growth. Okay, so this section gets into the meat of this. So, all of the data, the SWOT analysis, that all goes to inform your goals and objectives, and it's really things you should be trying to accomplish during the next 20 years. This is really the marching order for staff, as well as the Economic Development Commission. So, there's basically 11 goals here, and then it's supplemented by policies. So, the first goal is strengthen city partnerships and resources to support economic opportunities. And this is basically working with the university, the chamber, the state, the port, working with everyone to market ourselves and try to encourage business vitality here, so that's behind goal number one. Next page. Okay, goal number two. Improve the business climate in College Place. Develop the identity. The wayfinding and some work we've been doing to look at alternate logos echoes into that. Figuring out ways to overcome perception that all businesses are closed Fridays and Saturdays. Working on creating a downtown business association, which Economic Development Group is doing. Parking strategy, creating incentives like that opportunities on. So, that's what's behind goal number two. Goal number three is stimulate and diversify in College Place's economy, and it's making sure we have a variety of businesses, both large and small, and that we can recruit some light industrial employers, because typically, when you agree about development costs in the state, for example, when you go and build single-family residential homes for cities, for example, typically, on the property taxation level, they'll cover cost of services. That isn't the case with commercial and industrial development. They actually pay over what they take in in services. And that's why it's important, because if you learn more of commercial and industrial folks, then that lessens the tax burden you have to on the residents. So, that's what's behind goal number three. Next. Goal number four. Maintain the city's infrastructure, so it meets the needs of existing employers and targeted industries. Since we don't really have a lot of incentive programs, and the main reason behind that is the state of Washington is the only state in the country that has a constitutional prohibition on doing economic incentive programs, which when you're trying to get industry is a challenge. So, like in Oregon, when I worked in Beaver, then you had urban renewal, underprize zones, e-commerce zones, strategic reserve program, there's a lot of stuff over there. Over here, that's actually forbidden in the state constitution. There's some efforts to try and change that, because cities all along the Washington border are having issues with the Oregon's and Idaho's of the world, but as of right now, it is what it is. So, really, our calling card is availability of good infrastructure. That's one thing that we can market and make available, try and get businesses here, so that's very important. So, just that we have high-quality and cost-efficient services, rebuilding the two drinking water wells, so our system is reliable and good, which we're doing, and then really conducting preventative maintenance, because if you don't do that, you're going to have a bear of a problem later. Next goal, which is five. Develop a diverse portfolio of sites ready for the businesses, and then give compelling case that we have a competitive advantage, because the infrastructure's in place and owners are willing to sell. And mainly, that has to do with inventory and the available sites, which we've been doing through the state in this free program called Opsites. And then develop a system so you have complete information, because when developers are looking at an area, they pretty much want something on a webpage or two, otherwise they'll move to the next place that has all the information in one place. So, that's what we're trying to do. Goal number six. Support the development, redevelopment of walkable College Avenue from Rose Street to 13th is a mixed-use downtown district that serves as an attractive location for small businesses, tourism, arts, culture, entertainment, community events and residence. There's a lot of discussion around this and that commission, and it's really trying to make it where we have a nice destination here, the Izameca, for folks who want to live downtown, work downtown, shop downtown. So, in order to do that, it's partnering with the university to see how we can do joint development, working with property owners on rehab or redevelopment actions. We are certified local government now, so there is some historic property incentives that can be used for some of these homes. The parking management strategy, that's a key one, because we always hear there's a parking problem. I would counter that it isn't so much of an availability problem as it is a management problem, more so than a parking lot as in a built environment problem. So, we're working with the university on that to mitigate those issues. And then develop the connected corridor for pedestrian and bike infrastructure. That dovetails into that Blue Mountain Regional Trails Plan for encouraging bicycling throughout the valley, and College Avenue, Larch, Whitman, those are all primary bicycling corridors for the area. Goal number seven. That one was a little bit of debate, because there's some folks who view the city that should just be all small businesses. However, there's other folks, given the fact that, again, with the single-family residential not covering all the tax needs, we need to diversify. So, what the commission landed on is that market College Avenue is the small-business corridor, and then Myra Road and State Route 125 for all your big-box stores and chain restaurants. So, that's where a lot of that type of development should occur, so that was the compromise, basically. Goal number eight on page 21. Grow and sustain a qualified workforce. And that's all about partnering with the university, the work source group, the core developing student internship programs, and then diversifying the job space so we can attract live and wage jobs. And that goes back in my previous comments, that we really need to do what we can to get some light industrial in here.
Good question on 8.1.
Yeah.
What does that refer to? Can you give us a little more detail?
So, public-private sponsorship of entrepreneurial education. That has to do, for instance, like with makerspaces or coworking spaces. We've been working a lot with Ralph Sterling over at the university and partnering with the chamber and the core, and a lot of folks to potentially establish a maker space business. the chamber and the port and a lot of folks to potentially establish a maker space business incubator coworking thing here in College Place, and that ties into that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. Goal number nine, that's embrace tourism as an economic development tool. Keith and there's a partner with Visit Wall Wall for a long time, there really wasn't a partnership there. In fact, when I started here at the city, the regional visitors guide had no mention on the front page of College Place. It mentioned Weitzberg and Dayton and Milton Freewater, but there was no ad for College Place, nothing, so you really didn't know we existed. Since that time, we instituted that lodging tax, and this year, for the first time, we actually have a three-page ad for College Place in there, and College Place is mentioned on the front cover. So we exist now, at least, in the tourism realm. And this is just time back to keep everyone informed, we need to keep detailed websites up, visitor information kiosks, that ties back to our wayfinding, embracing historic properties and developing tourism activities, that ties back to a lot of the new community events we've been doing, such as the farmer's market, Winter Fest, things like that. One thing that there was extensive discussion about was establishing some sort of like sports complex once we have newer development coming in, and there's an opportunity there because the 260 acres that was annexed down College Avenue, McCurnan and Christiansen Development, there's going to have to be a park that's out there. And in talking with the superintendent of the public schools here, Tim Payne, there's a general belief that if we were able to develop fields with turf, that we'd be able to get a lot of like championship games here, and then you have folks staying in hotels, shopping, going to restaurants. So we really might have some sort of sports complex thing as development occurs. And then embrace bicycles, that's a very strong component of the tourism industry, and really making sure the regional trail plan that everyone participated in comes alive. Goal 10, supporting programs, projects, and development efforts to enhance the job market. Key things there is recruiting lodging facilities, that's a major thing that's hanging over us right now. We do have vacation rentals, we don't have hotels yet, we're working on that, but we really need that to happen. And then also support then maintaining and growing new community events, because a lot of your retailers and just general community vitality, one-on-one says you really need community events to get the whole city together, and that's what we've been trying to do with Independence Day, Halloween, Winter Fest, and farmer's market, so that's listed as a policy. And then 10-3 is supporting educational resources that are aligned to meet the needs of employers in College Place. And what that ties to is that you allow school, in the past, it was mainly training just to go to higher education, but maybe there's some folks that want to do plumbing, or some folks that basically want to work on a lathe machine or stuff like that, and it's basically trying to be all-encompassing to cover the needs of employers here, and the school district has been doing that. The last goal here, and at first, this wasn't even in the plan, but there is a lot of back and forth on this one, because some felt that a lot of other goals alluded to this, but at the end of the day, majority of the commission felt that it needed to be called as its own goal. The fact that we need to capitalize on the valley wine industry, especially since it's right next door in Wall Wall and then all around in our unincorporated areas surrounding us. The main discussions was recruiting wineries down in that State Route 125 corridors, you head toward the old Milton Highway. There actually are some wineries just outside in the periphery, and as we grow, the likely would be in the city, so one would think that that would continue. And then recruiting ancillary businesses integral to this tourism, so that's your restaurants, your hotels and light industry like warehousing, that big warehouse on 125 out by Italia, a lot of that's all tied to the wine industry. So then, if you go to the next pages, that just goes and shows examples of reports, so go a few pages, keep going. Go to the retail marketplace profile where it's like in green and red, because that's the one I think is really entered there. So this retail marketplace profile is probably the most interesting one of all of these reports.
Page 29.
Yeah. That's the most interesting one, because that actually catalogs the demand, so that means the amount of potential of sales that the folks who reside or live are students in the city, basically the likelihood that they'll buy things in the town, and then the supply is the amount of stores available in the respective category. And green means that you really should be recruiting folks in those sectors, and red means that they actually, the supply supersedes the demand, and that's actually the amount of sales they're making over what the demand would be. So some of the overhanging areas where we have opportunities in is like, for instance, car dealerships, there's quite a bit of demand there over supply. Then food and drink, for example, so your restaurants, we have a significant demand there as well. Furniture stores, there's a demand there, however, home furnishings, we're actually oversupplied on that. Building materials, we're very oversupplied on that, because Home Depot's here and there shipping materials all the way out to La Grande, so yeah, we're definitely over in that category. Miscellaneous store retailers, gas stations is a big one as well, grocery stores, one would think that actually we would be over what the demand is because of Walmart, but we actually aren't. We could support additional, which I find very interesting, and then the same with clothing as well. So there's actually a lot of opportunity for stuff we can recruit. The only ones that we're really under, that we have like an oversupply of is your general merchandise, which I think hearkens to your Walmarts of the world, and then building materials, and then home furnishings. The home furnishings one, I think, is a little interesting, because occasionally, when you look at what's classified in the NAICS code on that, I think some of the actually what Home Depot sells is categorized that way, so I would actually debate that that probably isn't a legitimate representation, but nonetheless, that's how it's coded. So that's probably the most interesting report there, but that really takes into account the whole economic development plan that the group worked on over the year. So any questions, comments?
Mike, I have a question way back at the beginning on the, I don't know what we call them, enterprise zones, or where are they, or the...
Oh, the business districts?
Business districts, yes. So one that I see that we did not name as a business district, seems to me it was 12th and Myra, although that property is... So we have 125 and Myra, but I don't know, does it go all the way to encompass 12th or not?
It wasn't included in this map, but the general consensus of the group is that that red Myra Road business district would basically go all the way down to 12th, because Myra Road's Myra Road and it's, yeah.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, we have some unoccupied property there that is commercial, and you know, as you go seeking potential, you know, there's another potential site.
Yep.
So in the same map, I noticed you have nothing across the street from the high school. You know, are you not rezoning that section already?
So that one, that will be, that district, we actually have to name, so this map was created before that finally like got annexed into the city and so forth. So as that goes through our development process, is the PUD or whatever they turn that into, we'll have to create a name for another business district there. It was just when we went through the nomenclature exercise, they were still outside the city, out in the UGA, so...
So I think it needs to be called the Savior Business District.
Yeah. Well, that can be mentioned as Economic Development Group, because right now, we're pretty much just marketing that, it's like the Stone Creek Development, because that's what Mike McCurnan and Craig Christiansen, the two property owners out there, that's what they're calling it right now. But as far as the name of the business district, that's completely up to debate, because when we went through this, they were still debating whether or not they wanted it to be in the city or not.
I think you said it, but one of the things as you go representing us for, to the business community, I think that we could really use some kind of hotel or motel in City of College Place.
Yeah. Well, and I can't give away all my cards on that one because of some non-disclosure agreements, but there is a hotel operator that is pretty close to sealing the deal on Mike McCurnan's property, and likewise, there's another one over on the property owned by Tom Watson and Travis Watts behind Del Taco and Les Schwab.
That would be a great place.
Both of those aren't final enough, or I can release who it is yet, though.
Do you have any leads on the industrial?
On industrial?
Yeah.
On industrial, there are a couple of them, mainly warehousing having to do pretty much with the wine industry, and then some food processing, and then actually some technology companies, because what actually has happened, like over on the I-5 corridor, for instance, is in the Portland area, Nike has made this determination that it would be cheaper for them to buy out entire office parks as opposed to building new property. So like when I worked at the City of Beaver, then they actually paid cash for 10 to 12 building office parks, and then basically evicted everyone out of them, and they've been doing this. So there's a lot of folks who are so fed up with the cost of business over there that they don't want to completely leave the West Coast, but they also don't want to deal with what's going on over there. So there's a lot of folks who were in that Beavering Hillsborough market who supplied intel who are looking over here, and that's specifically who I've been talking to on that. Those people specifically had been looking at that area that we want to do the UGA swap out to, that Pepper's Bridge area, just because that's where the new well will be, there's easy access with State Route 125 right there, and there's signals, so that piques their interest heavily.
One of the things you mentioned was car dealerships.
Yeah.
I grew up in a car dealership business, I spent 23 years in a Ford dealership. Have you talked to anybody from that side of the business line?
I have tried talking to Ford to try to get them back out into this area. It seems like there's a bit of incongruency between what local operators may be willing able to do versus what the corporate side of the car dealership, as far as allowing franchisees to go into certain areas. It seems like there's some incongruency there, because a lot of them pulled back as far as where they will allow some of the franchisees to go into, because of what happened during the recession, and it seems like they haven't necessarily augmented that yet, so they're still pretty conservative on that front. So with the folks I've talked to, at least on the Ford side of things, because I talked to Ford dealership on the Tri-Cities area.
I have a name for corporate if you would like to hear it.
Yes, I would.
One of your items on tourism was embracing bicycles.
Yeah.
Will you share a little bit more of what that vision is?
Well, that vision is properly marking with our bike routes, because there really was no signage around that, there was no rhyme or reason. The Blue Mountain Bike Trail Plan, that really cleaned that up, so we will be putting bike signage in those areas. I think it's also making sure that either there's bike racks, or for instance, that there is bike sharing, so one of the things that the city council voted to allow, and we're working with them, it's just a long process, because they're rolling out to a lot of the cities right now, is there's a bike sharing service called Line Bike, and they basically offer bike sharing on an app, where you basically pick up a bike and then you pay for that in this app, and then ride it to wherever, leave it there, neither next person could take it, or you take it, and then they have staff where if the bikes are just out there too long, because it has a GPS on it, they'll go and get it. So it's doing things like that to really push the bike culture here. And Wall Wall is pretty aggressive on that, because they have the bike tour over there, and we've been talking with Allegro Cyclery about extending that over here for like another bike race, so doing things like that. And I think it's only going to expand, especially with the county project of putting that multi-use trail in from the Homestead Development all the way out to the Whitman Monument, because now there's pretty much a singular bike route going east to west from Wall Wall all the way out.
All right, very good. Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. I gotta go back to...
Thanks.
Are we supposed to be authorizing this or moving on, or is this just an FYI?
This was just the informational, it'll be incorporated as into the conference plan, and through that process, you'd be approved.
Okay.
That's the way I understand it.
All right, Mr. Dorn is back with us again. Got the haircut?
I did.
Yep, looking good.
Oh, I was so excited. I was driving down, and signs actually worked, they had a little sandwich court sign out front that said "Open," and I saw it. So... I just want to go to the land use report. We have some information to share as well. I'm going to try to be mindful of not overwhelming you with numbers, so, but there are a couple of things that I want to highlight.
I don't actually have the tables on here.
Well, it's in the report. It's in the report, so if you just, so, right there, okay. So part of the update process is that there's kind of a, several different ways of looking at the world. One is from kind of a common sense perspective, another is from a planning perspective, and then another is, you know, what do the numbers say? And just as Mike's discussion just illustrated, because we saw all three of those perspectives, what makes sense based on what we know about the community, what makes sense from a planning standpoint, and what do the numbers say? And hopefully, all those things reconcile. Well, this is another way of looking at this, and this is much more number-oriented than it is, what do we know about the community and what makes sense? But the interesting thing is, is that by and large, they all align. This is a table that's in the draft report that you have, which is the land use report, which looks at how land is being used, and how that compares to the future land use map and the zoning map, and does everything align? So what's interesting about this map, I don't know if we can get it any bigger, is, so one of the things that the county assessor does in assessing properties is they assign a use code to each parcel of land, and that's part of the equation of determining what the value of the land and the buildings there, and therefore what the taxes are paid. So the county assessor assigns a use code based on how they understand the land is being used, and that is based on a series of options that the state provides, so there's some consistency between counties and how that's done. So what this is, is the use codes that come from the county assessor and from the state, and it looks, and it shows us in each zoning district how the land is being used. So you see some numbers that kind of show up at time and time again, and so you kind of remember them. In case you were wondering, there is 3,316 parcels of land in the city. And we have that, the various zoning districts in the city, the general commercial, the neighborhood commercial, the industrial, the... neighborhood commercial, the industrial, the downtown mixed use. We have the various zoning districts. And so this shows us the distribution in the various zoning districts and it shows us how the uses are arrayed in the community. So if we go, John, up to the top, if you look where you see that number 11 that says "single-family residential", that's a typical traditional single-family residence. There's 2,215 of them in the city. Out of the 3,316 parcels, about two-thirds, which kind of makes sense. And then you can see what districts they're primarily in. Most of them are in the R-60 district, which is a single-family residential district. And then the next largest group is in the R-75 and then the next largest group is in the planned unit development. Interestingly enough, if you look then at the multifamily zoning district, there are actually more single-family residences in the multifamily district than there is multifamily in the multifamily district. So when you start to look at the numbers, they start to tell us some things that are kind of interesting. So going to the discussion you just had about hotels and motels, that's use code number 16. And if you look across, it actually says that there's a hotel or motel in town and it's in the multifamily zones. I tell this is probably a coding error or mistake. And that's something that we'll follow up with the assessor's office on and she's been great to work with and has been very helpful and supportive, but that's an example of something that's probably just a coding error, easy one to fix. But it confirms with what we know about the community, what Mike was just talking about, there are no hotel motels in town. So that kind of jumps out at us when we look at that.
So I wonder if they're considering that property university owns on College Avenue that's like six units or something that they do short-term rental. I mean, usually just for visiting people or the university.
But that is in the downtown mixed use zone, so it's not popping up in that zoning category, so.
So a couple of other things that kind of popped up, and this is consistent with some of the things that Mike was just talking about, uses that are in the twenties, you can see where it says like 25 is manufacturing, you have furniture and fixtures, 27 is manufacturing, printing and publication. Actually, all the uses in the twenties are manufacturing, but you only see 25 and 27 show up. There's a whole bunch of industrial manufacturing uses that aren't here. And in fact, of those two, what is there? There's one of one and two of the other out of 3,316 uses? So let's say you have virtually no industrial uses in the town. You really truly have virtually no industrial uses in the town.
Are you sure we have even those?
And those are, one of those is a little bit arguable because it might be more of a, more of the business maybe fixtures is sales as opposed to manufacturing. So that may even be overstated at three. But the point is, none. So there's a couple of other things that are kind of interesting. If we go down to the bottom of the page, John, and so this shows the uses in each of the districts. So that second column where there's one, that's the neighborhood commercial zone. So there's one parcel zone neighborhood commercial in the entire city. And interestingly enough, because we looked, it has a single-family residence on it. It doesn't have a neighborhood commercial use on it. So there is no neighborhood commercial zone as a practical matter.
Well, there is a barber shop there, but that's the neighborhood commercial.
Well, it's interesting because it doesn't show up on the assessor's use code.
As a barber shop?
As it being there. So then that may be then there's another coding issue. So it's not as bad. There is truly one as opposed to not.
Is that the barber shop that they just sold the house off?
Over on Sixth? That's where it's at, I think. I'm pretty sure. I'm assuming it's still open.
No, I just, I just went through a house a month ago that sold and had a barber shop in the basement.
Oh.
The gentleman was in his nineties, so it probably hasn't been used for 15 years. But it was a barber shop, obviously. Not barber chair even.
The barber shop just right down the street. I stopped it. I found out today it's a third-generation barber shop.
Yeah.
Okay. So a couple of other things that jump out. That 10, that's industrial, that's the industrial zone, I believe. We scroll up as we find this. Yeah.
Yep.
10. So there are 10 parcels that are zoned industry and of the 10, five of them are involved in educational services provided by the university. It's support services by the university, not what we consider to be classic industry.
Right.
So, you know, that's kind of interesting as you look at it. But then there's a couple of other things. And this starts to get into the kind of the, kind of nerdy planning stuff. But if you look, let's go back up, John, or actually, you see right there, mobile home parks. It says there are 11 mobile home parks. I'm looking where it says 15, the use, mobile home parks, that's a use, mobile homes in a park. It says there are 11 of them in the mobile home park zone, but there are 87 of them in the multifamily zone. So what's the purpose of having a special zone just for mobile homes when there's more of them in the multifamily than in the special zone? And that's actually a really, really interesting question because mobile homes are a source of affordable housing. And interestingly enough, by definition and by law, there haven't been any new mobile homes built since 1976. A manufactured home is not a mobile home. That's kind of what succeeded it. But a manufactured home, from planning purposes, can be located anywhere a single-family residence is. From a planning perspective, whether the building was built on-site, was fixed, or brought to the site in pieces and assembled, doesn't make a difference from a planning standpoint. But a mobile home, which was something that was built prior to 1976, there's a limited number of them. There's only so many of them. Now technically, you could move some from one community to another, but with each passing year, that gets more and more difficult because you just can't pick them up and move them that easy. So you've got a limited number of uses in that zone and it's going to be declining over time, but it's an important source of affordable housing. And so one of the questions that it raises and one of the things that came out of staring at this table that John and I have been contemplating is, when we go from this to the development regulations, maybe we should be thinking about merging the mobile home park and the multifamily zones into one zone and allow mobile home parks to continue, but to give the ability then to the property owner to over time, when they're ready, to let them evolve to other forms of multifamily housing. So to preserve the notion that it's being used for housing and particularly affordable housing and not lose that asset, but realize there's going to have to be a transition someday, somehow. So that's something that has jumped out as we've looked at this. And because of that, we have some language that you'll see in a minute, a change to one of the policies in the comp plan that says, we should really think about this some more and we should talk about this when we're looking at the development regulations because this is something that might need some more attention. So one of the things we wanted to do tonight was to highlight that issue and give you a chance to start to think about affordable housing, mobile homes, and multifamily housing because when we come back and talk about zoning, I think we're going to need to deal with that a little bit more. Now, we can provide you some more information, but we wanted to flag that issue for you because it was kind of an interesting one, that we have a special zone that isn't really being used. And we got started talking about why and that led us to the, yeah, but let's really think about the consequences here, which is affordable housing, it's housing opportunities within the community. So that was something that was pretty significant.
Can I bring up something there?
Yes.
Because I'm a little beyond a baby boomer. I think there's going to be a tremendous need for senior citizen housing. And this manufactured homes, we've got one park here, but I wonder if that's something to take into consideration? And would that be multifamily or not?
Well, and that's going to be an interesting thing to talk about because communities are a little bit different. But generally speaking, the progression is to go from a single-family home and you say, enough of this, for whatever reason. I'm tired of cleaning the house. I'm tired of taking care of the yard. I want to be gone for part of the year. I need to be closer to my kids. I want to be closer to healthcare. There could be a number of different reasons, but the progression tends to be from single-family residents to multifamily housing to a multifamily housing that has kind of a continuum of care so that you can, I guess we use the term age and place, so that you don't have to keep moving, that you have some options available to you. And that might be, one of the questions is, to what extent does that exist within the community or to what extent as we get older that people would have to move out of college place in order to be able to have additional housing opportunities? And so that might be a real good one to look at.
Where does duplex and a tri-four or five-plex, is there a line in that, in the zoning change? Is it all considered multifamily?
Well, actually, the multifamily that is defined here is three or more units, right?
Right.
The assessor defines multifamily as five or more because they kind of, they lump duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes together. So if you look up on that line item there, you see there's 204 duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes in town. I know there's some fourplex developments and I've seen them on the maps and I know there's duplexes. I don't know if there are many triplexes in town, but I know there's twos and fours.
We have a few triplexes. The building code recognizes a duplex under the IRC, the International Residential Code, and then anything above that is in the IBC. So it's treated as commercial and you get into sprinkling and things like that. It's interesting that the state's category kind of contradicts how the building industry and the state because we adopt what the state has for building codes and how they treat that. But to go back to the manufactured homes, manufactured home parks, we actually have two of them. We have Country Estates and then we have Cedar Bend up north near, off of Myra. But they're all, those are in a land use of multifamily. So under our current code, in order to create a manufactured home park, you have to find a piece of land that is multifamily zone.
Now, Mark, may I find right or wrong, manufactured home only means a house built someplace and brought here on wheels? Or something that, because you can buy homes that are, the walls here and the part of the roof are put together and you just come in and just boom, push them up, bolt them into place. I mean, that's technically a manufactured home too, but is there a difference in our...
So you can put a manufactured home anywhere in the City of College, in any residential zone. There may be covenants and restrictions in some of these neighborhoods, but the stipulation is that you put, in a typical residential subdivision, you are required to meet standard setbacks for the zone and you put a foundation underneath it. Whereas in a manufactured home park, you can skirt it with aluminum for the foundation and generally you have different setbacks, reduced setbacks. You still have fire and life and safety to meet. In terms of a lot of the new trend towards modular homes where you have different components and they're assembled in a factory and finished on-site, those can locate anywhere in a residential district and multifamily as well. But again, there's the same stipulations. You meet setbacks, heights, foundations, those sort of things. So they tend to have more of an appearance of a typical residential or...
But not a separate zoning type of district?
But not a separate zoning district, yeah.
That was the really big question. So let's assume, well, I have another, two questions actually. The first one is Carrington Creek. Bottomer himself told me that he built those things as a condominium process. So what is the city considering of that?
So you're referring to there are some duplexes that were built in there?
No. He said the reason that he was able to get them so close together and smaller setbacks is because they were built as a condominium complex.
No, they were built as a PUD and they still meet setbacks, 10 feet of separate, the individual residential homes. They have reduced front yard, rear yard setbacks, but that was through the PUD process.
Okay.
That allowed them to have smaller lots, smaller yards because they have all of that open space, which is a requirement in a PUD. But they did do some...
What's PUD?
Planned unit development. So they did do, Bottomer did do like around the circles. There are some, they were built as duplexes and then condominiumized or something after the fact.
So the PUD just basically means they have smaller lots as long as they have other grassy common areas that they can all use together, is that not correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So, but we only have one more of those located in town?
Well, the Homestead Development that Aiden Holmes is building out on the west end of town.
Do you consider that a PUD?
That was a PUD, planned unit development.
And where is their grassy areas?
Well, they have, they have an open space common area along Dome Creek. They have walking trails through there. They are dedicating a two-acre park and then they also have, there's the wetland area that they are, will be enhancing again.
If that's all we have so far at this point, because I'm trying to think this, because you're right, the one thing that our community is, and from a real estate standpoint, we need low-income housing. We need retired low-income housing. It's one of our biggest problems in the entire area. I constantly get calls from people trying to buy mobile homes someplace and even then, those are in the 17, 80,000 range. And a lot of these people need them in the twenties to $50,000 range.
The PUDs can be done in any residential zone. It's just a, it's kind of an offshoot of your standard residential development processes, so.
That is one other quick thing. Looking at some of the very preliminary conceptual plans for the McCurnan Christianson property, there's a big circle on it that says senior housing. So I think they're kind of aware of some of the things you've been touching about. I want to, I want to point something out, be real careful here, so I don't want to get in. This is a slippery slope. There are two numbers that get used, so the assessor uses to identify undeveloped land. And when it's released, it's say, oh, you mean vacant lands. And the problem with that is, and it's not just here, it happens in every city and county, is there tends, these two tend to be used a little bit interchangeably, but there's a difference between vacant land and undeveloped land. If I own a lot that's zoned for single-family residents... If I own a lot that's zoned for single-family residents, and is suitable for development as a single-family residence, but there isn't a house on it, that's vacant land. If I own some land that has been dedicated as open space, or I have some land that I've built a road on, so I can access some property, or have reserved it to put utilities on it, that is actually land that has not been developed, in the sense that it doesn't have a building on it, but it's not vacant land in the sense that it's suitable for development. So there is a difference between those two. And if you just take those two numbers and say, well, that's all vacant land, and it's all suitable for development, it gives you very inaccurate information. And so one of the things that we talked to the assessor's office about, and she said absolutely, is to, is we're gonna go through all of those and consistently say that vacant land that is intended and suitable for development is gonna be like 91 on the code there. And that land that for some reason that is not developable, like a bunch of the land over in the villages, because that's where their common areas are, that's gonna show up as a different line item. Why is that important? Because then it makes it a heck of a lot easier to monitor, because all we have to do is push a button and say, how many parcels are coded 91? And where are they? And we know. Now, when we push a button, we were getting all this stuff that says there's vacant land, there's all this vacant PUD land. And we went and looked at every single one of them. Homeowners Association Open Space. Homeowners Association Playground. Homeowners Association Access Easement. So there's a whole bunch of things that are just driving us crazy. So, we're gonna go in and clean that up. Another one that is very interesting is this public reserve zoning district. And there's, there's a challenge in planning. Typically zoning districts are assigned based on what the vision says, what we envision the development should look like in this area, and so that you have compatible land uses. So if this is a single-family residential neighborhood, you wouldn't find industry or business in it, for instance, because it's supposed to be a nice, quiet, single-family neighborhood. That's the basis of zoning. The public reserve zone in this case is interesting, because many communities have some kind of zone that has the word "public" in it, and it's not based on uses, it's based on ownership. If it's owned by a public entity, we're gonna zone it "public." And the problem with that is, is what if it's sold? Because now you have something where you say, you can only use it for public purposes, and it's owned by a private party, and you got a problem. It's called taking somebody's property. Well, we don't have a taking issue here, but we have a different issue, which is, there's 109 parcels that are zoned "public reserve." And 39 of them are owned by the university. And they aren't public lands. They're university lands. And so, land that is owned by the city, land owned by the school district, owned by the housing authority, the rules and regulations that apply those are applied to the university. And it's not public land. So, that, that, just the name is a misnomer. It's not a public reserve, it's not reserved for public use, it's reserved for private use. And it, and that just kind of stands out like a sore thumb. So, we've had a lot of talk about trying to find a way to tie and connect to the university master plan. But the more we've talked about it, I think it makes sense to have a special zoning district for the university campus. Whether the master plan is approved or integrated or not, the best is to have the master plan approved, and have the city's plan, the university's plan in alignment. Everybody have a common vision, the same plan, and that works great. But I don't think that it makes sense to have university-owned property on and off the campus under the banner of "public lands reserved for public use." So, I, there's, there's a change that we can make there as well. So, a long way of saying, there's kind of a lot of stuff in that when you just kind of stare at the wall for a while. And so, those are some of the things that, that jumped out at us. In just a moment, I'm gonna show you how all of that I just said gets translated into a couple of sentences in the complex.
Is that? Could some of that land be land donated or left in the states or whatever to the university?
Absolutely, yeah. They, they could have bought it, it could have been gifted. It could be any one of a number of reasons. But the point is that it's the university's land, and it's not a public land. And so it's kind of a recognition that the university is, has kind of a special status, and that the campus itself should really be the focus in, in what's appropriate for the campus, and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's very different than what applies to the land that's owned by the city out by the Sioux Streetman Plan, for instance. It's just apples and oranges.
I have a question, does the other, like the Wawa and Rogers, are they public reservers? So it's also a little bit greater than just the university?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'm, I'm just kind of wondering out loud here, but let's say Rogers. If they sell the property, and somebody just wants to develop, and it's public reserve, what can they do with it? I'm, I'm kind of wondering whether, since it's, whether it should be zoned, I don't know, residential, and just a school happens to be there, in case somebody decides to, okay, sell it, now what can we do with it? And it's already in the, in the code, what's in the neighborhood?
Yeah, a, a perfect example of that is the old Rogers School Site. And, you know, I don't know what was there before. There were probably some homes there at one point before the, the first Rogers Elementary School was built. But that's kind of one thing we've talked about is, well, the school is gone now, and the new owners of the property is the university. And there's just been kind of this assumption that, well, that means the university is going to use it for university purposes. And that may be fine and well, and great for that property. But should there be another underlying land use that says, well, we need to have a community discussion about what goes back here now that this elementary school's gone? Maybe it should be XYZ. Or maybe it should be, you know, the university. And that's always been the assumption, but that's a perfect example of going back to, cause a lot of codes will, will have that underlying land use. And a school can locate in any residential district, as long as they have adequate facility, you know, streets and, you know, water and sewer, and, and those sort of things.
And it's not just the universities. There's, it's not just the universities. Same, same thing with schools.
Yep.
You know, so that, that, there's gonna be certain uses that we should look at them and say, they are permitted in a variety of zones, but they have an underlying zoning. There has to be, I think, a pretty good reason to have a special zoning district. And the university campus is a good reason, I think. The campus itself. And so anything in the campus should be a part of, you know, developed as it's a part of the campus. If the university owns property that is separate and outside of the university campus, which is fine, but it should be zoned so that it's compatible with the, the neighborhood. And its uses should be compatible with the neighborhood. So, the Rogers, the closer you get to the university, a little bit grayer, the further away from the campus you get, it gets a little bit clearer. If the university owns some property way up on, on the northeast corner of town, completely separate from the university campus, they can still own it, certainly, can still use it and develop it. But the thought is, is that should be developed so it's compatible with the uses in that neighborhood, not compatible with the uses in a different neighborhood. And so that's what the thought is. Same thing would apply to the school district. And some of the others is, is that the uses within a neighborhood should be compatible. The university campus arguably is a neighborhood unto itself.
So, so the Rogers, the old Rogers School Site, well, the map that Mike had up in the economic development plan showed that as part of the university district. And that, that seems appropriate, in that if we develop a university district zone, that would likely be included in that, you know, going down to where the WEC is, and, and the defunct track properties would be included in that university zone.
Is it, say, the, the school, the university has their zone, and say, they own a couple houses 10 blocks over. Is it difficult for them to rezone that if? I mean, is?
Well, in theory, they wouldn't have to rezone. If they had, let's say if the university owned some houses that were 10, 10 blocks, separated by 10 blocks from the campus. So, they have the property. If, if it had a house on it, they could continue to use it for single-family residential.
Yes, yeah, so, so the properties that are, you know, estates lead to the university, and they're, you know, isolated from the campus. Even, even directly across the street, say on Whitman, there have been a lot of properties that the university has acquired through estates. Those still stay zoned as multifamily.
Oh, okay.
And, and even in some of the, most of the, the assessor's office should have those marked as a residence or a multifamily, whatever the category may be.
In fact, there are at least two, maybe three houses on Fifth, which by the post office, the university has purchased recently. But that's not changing the zoning in those areas.
Right. Another good example is the homes on Fourth Street between College Avenue and Bay, next to the Dairy Express on the south side there. Those were permitted to become part of the university under conditional use permit. And through our wonderful tracking systems here and memories, those conditional use permits actually expired over 10 years ago. They were, they were temporary in that, they were temporary for the office space as the administration building was being renovated in. And so now all those offices have moved back into the campus, and other university-related uses have flown, have, have come back into those vacant buildings. And, and they've made improvements to them, and, and it is functioning as part of the university, but it's really, it's not, it's not part of the, the, the district really, at this point officially. So, that, that would be, and then behind it, as Scott pointed out, there are properties that are owned by the university, but they use them as student housing. And they're not, you know, they're not assessed as university or P, uh, university property in the sense of the university. They're, most of them are probably taxed.
I'll make up an example, and I'll make it a silly example to illustrate the point. Envision a, a house in a single-family neighborhood way away from the university, way over by Larch or something like that, one of the neighborhoods. Somebody donates a, a house to the university, and the university says, great, we have this house in the single-family neighborhood. Now, we're gonna tear the house down and move the university's pig farm off campus into that, onto that lot.
No, he doesn't.
And, and under that scenario, the answer would be, no, you wouldn't. Because pig farms aren't permitted in a single-family neighborhood. They're maybe permitted on the university campus, because the university campus master plan says that having a pig farm is an integral part of the university and the university's mission. But it's not, it's not a permitted use in a single-family neighborhood on a 6,000 square foot lot. So that would be an example, a silly example, but it would be a way of distinguishing between uses on the campus and uses on properties that are now associated with the campus, where the ownership could be John, could be one of you, could be me, could be the university, could be anybody. But it's in a single-family neighborhood, and so the uses are defined by that neighborhood and that is owned, not by the ownership. That would be the, an example.
Now, what was the, what was the code? We could have farm animals in our community?
Well, we do allow, we do not allow swine. In the city.
That's easy.
Okay, let me just, a couple of things real quickly here. And I don't, I won't go into the details of it, but the general is, suffices. When you, when you, you take this, the next step then is, you look at all the parcels, all 316, you see the ones that are developed, you see the ones that are undeveloped. Within the ones that are undeveloped, what you really, really want to know is, what are the ones that are vacant? That are, and then of the ones that are vacant, what are the ones that are suitable for development? And how much is suitable for development? I might have a 10-acre parcel, but I might have a stream that runs right through the middle of it, and so I've got critical areas and buffers. That area is not suitable for development. McCurnan Christianson Property is a good example of that. They have about 153 acres there, but there's not 153 acres that are suitable for development, because you've got the, the wetland. They're gonna have to put roads, they're gonna have to put parks, they're gonna have to put utilities. So you have to make a bunch of adjustments, even after you identify the vacant land that's suitable for development. When you do all of that, what do you find? There's no vacant land suitable for industrial development in the city of College Place. There's no multifamily land vacant suitable for development, except for the land that's in the McCurnan Christianson Development. With only a few exceptions. There's a couple of parcels up on Larch, kind of on the north end, that have, are being used for farm, as farms right now. But you can kind of on two hands count them. Other than the property owned by McCurnan and Christianson, the residential property that is vacant, suitable for development inside the city limits, you can count on less than 10 fingers. There is almost no vacant land suitable for development in any of the categories in the city, except for the land that's owned by McCurnan Christianson. The good news is, it is a block of land. They are proceeding with their development plans. They're looking at developing it as a planned unit development, which means that the whole area would be developed under a plan, so that all of it fits together and flows and functions together, and the various uses are compatible. That's the good news. But it means that one developer controls about all the vacant land in the city, and controls the market in the city. So, in the future, there's gonna have to be some adjustments to the urban growth area to allow some diversity of choice, to allow additional land for development. And if there's going to be additional residential development, there's gotta be commercial and industrial development, because as Mike said earlier, commercial and industrial development is what generates the tax base that enables the city to provide the services that those, that residents that live in the community want and expect from their local government. You have to have commercial and industrial. If you add residential without adding commercial and industrial in all of about, except for two or three cities in the entire state, that's a, a, an economic equation that cannot be sustained. There are a couple of communities over on the west side of the state where the residential property values are so high that they could, and, and, and because, and the, and the wealth of the individuals involved, they don't expect a lot of city services, because they don't go to city parks, they go to private clubs, they do this, they do this. So there's a handful of cities where that doesn't apply. But for everybody else, you have to have. you have to have commercial and industrial development in order to support and sustain residential development. And when you look at the numbers, at the end of the day, what do you see? Zero, 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 and zero. And the one bright shining prospect, which is the McKernan Christiansen Development. And that's kind of it for the whole town. And so, that's, that's where the city sits in a, in a nutshell. So, John, let's jump ahead if we can to the comprehensive plan. So this is, jumped even out of there. As you get a chance to, to read or reread the report, you'll see, hopefully in much fewer words, everything we've just highlighted. But there are a couple, because of this, there are a couple of tweaks that we're proposing to the, to the language in the comprehensive plan. Let's go down to the goals and. We've added to the vision statement, keep on going down. So, we have the goals and policies which you've seen before, which you've discussed. It integrates the things that Mike referenced, keep, keep going. And, do you have the track changes turn on?
No.
Because we should, it should, the changes aren't showing up. It should be right. Why isn't it? That's, that's the document, isn't it?
It is, but it's in a PDF.
Why isn't, why aren't the changes there?
Do you want me to load the Word document?
You can do that, yeah.
Can you do that real quick?
That's really weird. The changes aren't highlighted. They should be outlined in, in, so you can see them. I can tell you what they say. Can you see them in your docu, your version?
No, I don't think so.
I can tell you what they are. Number fourteen. This is the public reserve, that's what we were just talking about. Making sure that the primary uses are uses that are dedicated public use, such as parks and open space. Schools and other things like that should be permitted in different zones and have a way of making sure they're, they're compatible with adjoining uses and that there should be some kind of special zoning district established for the university campus. So all that we said about the public reserve, the mixed, mishmash of uses and all on and on, it gets reserved. Those are the changes that, that have been kept, that reflect that. Potentially eliminate the neighborhood commercial zone involves one parcel. There's gonna be neighborhood commercial uses that should be listed as a line item. Says in the residential zones, here are the kinds of neighborhood uses you can have. And how to do it, you don't have to have a special zoning district for that, because what does that mean? Somebody wants to, to have a, like a mom-and-pop grocery store, they have to get a rezone in order to do that. And if you have to get a rezone, you're not gonna do that. We should be able to say, these are neighborhood commercial uses, and here's how we're gonna go about permitting them. Here's the other one we talked about, looking at revising the regulations to integrate the mobile home parks and the multifamily residential into one zone. So that's the change there.
Let's see, how do I get this to refresh?
Anything in this new panel talks about other lost quarters or VRVOs?
There was some previous language in there, but no new additions. Okay, yeah, maybe editing. Now, let's see if we go down to this. Oh, yeah, we gotta get the, their.
Review. How do you wanna see it?
Yeah, it's just.
Show markup?
Show others, um, simple markup. You should be able to say all markup maybe? Yeah, there you go. Okay. There we go. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, good, 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 good. Okay, goals. Keep going, keep going.
Hang on a second, let me.
There, there, there. Okay.
Need a ladder, Greg?
Support the, you know, support the preparation, adoption, implementation, the master plan.
You want, you want a pointer?
Oh, sure. That's type check.
It's in the middle.
Okay.
That's the mouse. There's a button right there.
Oh, right there. Okay, so there it is. Language about establishing university master plan or similar zoning designation for the campus, there it is right there. Go down. Added the words, continue because the city does in fact have regular conversations with the university, so continue to do that. Same thing with the school district, rigor consultation. Here it is right there. That's the big one. Contain sufficient land. To meet, project public well into the future to provide the tax base necessary. Keep going. Keep going. There is what we were just talking about. There it is right there. Clean up the public reserve. Take a look at neighborhood commercial. And let's kind of really think harder about what we're gonna do with multifamily development and how do we assure that there's a, a variety of housing options in the community for persons of all age and different affordability. So that's gonna be the one that I think is the one that we're, we're getting development regulations we really need to, to, to think about. Those are the only changes, I think. These are the policies that Mike was talking about. They've incorporated into the document. These are the park ones. And this just shows the relationship between the future land use map and the zoning map if we make some of these changes. And so we would have, if it says commercial on the future land use map, that would mean that it's either gonna be general commu, commercial, or it's gonna be a, a planned unit development. But if it's commercial, it's not gonna have, it's not gonna be a public reserve. Commercial is commercial. Commercial is not public land for public use. Commercial light industrial, same thing. Here's how we would, multifamily would look, single-family would look. So this is just to, to clean that up, so a chance to do some housekeeping, some chances to, to say what we need and be what we say, and simplify things a little bit.
Greg, we had talked about, excuse me, I'm chewing up a candy. The idea of going to one zone. I was wondering if the planning commission had any thoughts on that? Especially when you.
Taking R seventy-five?
Yes. Or thirty-five or sixty.
When you look at how many parcels we have that are R sixty versus how many are R seventy-five, there's a little. There's really little distinction when between, I mean, it's, you're talking a thousand square feet in terms of minimum lot sizes. Other than you can do duplexes in R sixty. Most of the new development we're seeing is in the R sixty category because they want the smaller lot sizes. That's what the market's driving. And the, the other factor would be how we wanna handle accessory dwelling units. The state says that we should allow those in all zones. And that would have a factor on densities as well. I just, I'm just kinda curious about that. I, I don't really see the, the benefit of an exclusive single-family district where no duplexes are allowed. Obviously, you wanna keep, I think it's good to have a break between multifamily and single-family. There's definitely a difference there, although in our multifamily zones, we have a lot of single-family in those neighborhoods as well.
You have more single-family in your multifamily than you have multifamily.
So do you allow on either of those zones lots larger than, like if I wanted a twelve thousand square foot lot, can I go and plaid it in one of those?
Yeah, we don't have a maximum lot size. I mean, there, there are discussions in more urbanized areas about having a maximum lot size so that our lands are used more efficiency, efficiently. We're not seeing that with our, with our development activities. Uh, we're seeing very efficient uses of our new developments of the lands.
Well, you know, and, and part of what you're saying that the market is driving the smaller lots, yeah, sure, because for the developer, you know, more density probably means more profit. I, I don't think, I guess I, I would disagree that, that there wouldn't be people that would want the bigger lot. Now, they might not be available.
Right.
You know, you might have to go find an older home that has the bigger lot already.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't propose putting a maximum lot size in our community. I don't think it would go over well. Really, I think, I think the developer or should have the option to have a product that meets their end goal, you know, larger lots.
Well, the other thing is, is that you, you, you do have, you know, other than McKernan Christiansen, you don't have big blocks of land that's suitable for development. You have little things spread around, so setting a, a minimum lot size will just, or a maximum lot size will just make that development process more difficult and, and or further complicate what's already a complicated equation. There's some areas, for instance, where, that are inside the city limits but don't have city sewers and aren't likely to have city sewers. And they have some development potential, but it's really gonna have to be one-acre lots so that they have a drain field and a reserved drain field. But if we say, no, you have to have a, you know, it, it, you have, you can't have anything larger than six thousand or nine thousand square feet, then that just means those lots won't develop.
Well, I don't think that, that anybody ever expected you would have a maximum lot size, but when it comes down to the minimum lot size, the only reason that you are focused on R sixty right now is because you don't offer an R fifty.
You're right.
If you offered an R fifty, I guarantee you every developer would be out there doing an R fifty because it makes more money, they can build more houses in R fifty than they can in R sixty, than they can in R seventy-five. So, those of us buying houses aren't buying R sixty houses because we want to. We're buying them because we have to.
Well, if you, if you actually look at the lot sizes out in like the Hayden Homes Development or even in the Villages, they, they are less than the six thousand square feet. That's why they went through the PED process. Now, they also had unique properties in that they had large amounts of critical areas on them. And so, uh, there was some advantages in addition to lot sizes to go through that process.
Well, and I think that's the, that's the conversation we should be having is, why are we allowing all the, all the new developments being PUDs only? And I think that's just, to me, we're cutting our, our nose off to spite our face. We should not be allowing any more PUDs. We should be requiring R sixty properties to be developed and not this R fifty stuff, because they're jamming us closer and closer and closer together, and it's not because we want it.
Well, it's interesting, if you look at the old core, in fact, you had a question a couple of weeks ago about a property, and you pointed out some neighboring properties that didn't meet the minimum lot size for the zone that the particular property in question was in. We have, in our old core, we have a mixture of five thousand square foot lots, you know, fifty, five hundred square foot, six thousand, and then there are some larger ones, you know, the narrow deep ones that have, look on paper, like Greg was saying, that there's development potential, but the house is right there up front. There's no way to get to the backyard other than down a narrow driveway. So, you know, I, I. Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a debate, you know, we, there's, there's positives and negatives to both, you know, compact development and large lot.
It's my opinion that the negative of all of the PUDs is going to eventually hurt our economy, our economic growth and our, our, our housing growth because not everybody wants to live in, in a PUD. And it's basically since most of the PUDs in our community are so heavily coveted, you can't even park in your own driveway for crying out loud. You know, it's just ridiculous, so.
What, what I see is the older people do not want large yards. They like the smaller lots. But are we just going to cater to older people, or are we going to invite families with children? There's got to be a balance.
Right, and the PUDs don't allow for backyards. I mean, if some of those PUDs should put a trampoline in the backyard, you'd use the whole backyard. I actually sold the property while, while, when we actually bought the house, the property behind it, because it was empty and she needed a yard. She has five kids. So, we bought the house because it only had a twenty-foot backyard and bought the house, the property behind it too. So, you know, there are families out there, you know, so. I, I said, my opinion is, is we're, we're hurting ourselves by allowing so many PUDs, and we need to curtail the PUD process. Needs to stop.
Well, one, I don't know that we can stop the PUD process, but we can ratchet up the standards, increase the open space requirements. There, I'm not gonna state my opinion about it, but I have heard that some people don't believe that the two-acre park out that's being proposed out of the, the Homestead Development is sufficient for the densities that are, that are out there. There's a lot of families out there with ten-foot backyards. And, and there's only gonna be a two-acre park on it. Well, that's, and part of it is gonna have a stormwater facility. So, you know. So, you can match it up to standards, and I think that's probably, you know, require more of the developer. Um, if you wanna cram more houses in, that's fine, but the kids need to be able to walk to an actual park they can play soccer on. You're gonna put a playground on it, and, you know, there's gonna be trees and shade and all that.
Well, I thought kind of the idea was if you had a community of R sixty properties and you wanna jam it into a PUD, the amount of housing that would normally be on those R sixties could be jammed into a small location as long as you had, but the property size should still be about the same.
Well, that is the theory, but our open space requirement is only fifteen percent. So, so when you take, and, and there's no defining what that open space is, it just has, other than it has to be common ownership and, so it could be, I mean, the hillside out there counts into their open space. Nobody's gonna play soccer on the hillside. Uh, the walking paths are great. I mean, you know, the, the aging population can get out there and they can walk around, you know, it's, there's, there is active recreation in that amenity. But, you know, are you gonna let your six-year-old go walk through the forest, along the creek? No.
So then the question must come in that if you're required, say, twenty-five percent of PUD has open space, and that makes it equal to what if they just did a bunch of R sixties, when the developer just did, developed regular city streets and made it all R sixty, are we still?
Well, that's, and then, and then we have, then we have our other, you know, our parks and open space requirement, you know, per cap, per thousand, however many thousand people we have, there's a requirement of X number. Regardless, you know, for, for, for the developments to go forward, you know, they're, even if they're not contributing in their own private open space. even if they're not contributing in their own private open space, there may be a requirement that they dedicate park ground or contribute funds towards the purchase of other park grounds.
So in the PUD, is there a minimum lot size?
No. The minimum is what they propose.
So it seems to me, and I agree, that maybe we need to look at those regulations for a PUD and that maybe there needs to be more criteria that staff can look at this master plan. And for instance, okay, this hillside's not going to be really usable. So that's really not, you know.
Open space.
Yeah, that's not open space or, or, you know, or, you know.
Yeah.
We need to actually create an area that maybe it's a park. And the other, the other issue, because I have some friends in the homestead neighborhood, especially the one now up on the hill, there's not adequate parking, you know, there's, because of driveways and the lot sizes. And, 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 let's be frank, most people don't park their cars in the garage anymore. And so they're parked, they're two cars and, and most families, you know, have at least two cars, you know, husband and wife, and that's what they have, their driveway is two cars. So then if they have a third car, and some people do, then it'll be on the street, plus if they have guests. So, you know, I've gone to visit my friends and it's always a challenge. And, and part of the challenge is alleviated in the fact that it's not all developed. So I can go down the street where they're building a house and kind of park, but when those houses are built.
Yeah, it's a conundrum. I mean, those are thirty-six foot wide streets with, in most cases, parking on both sides. But the lots are not your standard, you know, sixty foot wide in most cases. And then you factor in a twenty-foot wide driveway for the two-car garage and, you know, if you're only got.
You end up with one parking spot per house on the street. And I don't think that up there anyway, I don't think that's probably enough. And then the other thing as far as talking about even the lot sizes and backyards. So the new phase that they're actively building now, the, the way that, that they've developed it or, you know, graded it, et cetera, is that the ten-foot backyard or whatever it is, it's going to be on a slope. So unless you build some sort of retaining wall, you're going to have the slope. Well, again, that's not even, you can't put your trampoline in that ten feet. You know, and it's not a gradual slope. It'll be a, you know, somewhat of a significant slope.
Yeah, and those are, those are decisions that the developer makes and how they, you know, really want to develop their property. We don't usually get into the nitty-gritty of a lot of that stuff, other than city standards and setbacks.
You know, I would argue that just as the city looks at building codes for life and safety, that we should probably be able to look and examine some of the decisions of, because it will affect the neighborhood. So if you end up with all these backyards that truly, let's say, not usable for kids to go play in, that means that where are they going to go? They're either going to go play in the street, which could be a life and safety issue, or they better have some park or something nearby.
You put your finger, I think, on an excellent issue. If you read the different PUDs or planned unit developments and different regulations in cities around the state, they frequently say things like, the purpose of the PUD is to provide an alternative to the standard subdivision ordinance or regulations. Or we want to encourage innovative techniques. And so in addition to our subdivision, we're going to provide this alternative approach. And, 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 and one could argue, well, maybe that was a good thing to do. Another could argue is if your subdivision standards and regulations weren't up to stuff, weren't producing the results that, that you desired, then why not update and upgrade your subdivision regulations? Why create a way of bypassing the regulation?
Which is what a PUD.
And so that's what it ends up becoming is a, is an alternative path. And so it begs the question, why not go back to the subdivision regulations and make sure that the standards there are appropriate and applicable so you don't need to have an alternative? You can use what it's intended for.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have to have a PUD zone.
No, not at all. Not at all. Like I say, in most cases, it was because it's, it was kind of something that caught on and it was easier to do that than it was to update the subdivision regulations. So it's, well, we'll just, and then we kind of add in that we're going to be innovative and this, this, all stuff's good. But there's nothing that says that regular subdivision regulations have to be un-innovative.
The problem with the, the language in the PUD code about being innovative and the development's going to be better than what this, your standard subdivision code, you know, requires, well, that's subjective. So how am I, as the administrator of the code, going to, you know, argue against, you know, some developer that comes in with some pretty pictures and says, this is going to be so wonderful? It's, it's problematic, other than having hard and fast, you know, requirements, setbacks, height limitations and minimum lot widths and, you know, things like that.
So how do we get a discussion started about this and maybe actually make some recommendations?
I think when we get into the development regulations, then let's look at the standards for, and we can put this together for you, let's look at the standards that are for PUD and let's look at the standards that are in the subdivision code and compare them. And maybe what we'll do is, is jump in a car or in a van and go out and drive around and look at some of the different developments and say, here's what the code says and here's what we got. And is that what was intended or not?
Did we get what we asked?
Yeah.
And are we going to, I mean, I see up there on the hill that you guys are talking about the millennials up there on the hill with their site down over the valley. It's not for kids. Are we going to, we can cater one area for millennials, another area for the elderly, another area for children? Or are we going to integrate and have them generations joining together? I mean, what do we want?
Yep. So, yep. That's where we are right now and those are some of the questions we have coming up, you guys. You are right. Everything you just said, I think you're a hundred percent right on point. And that's when we get to the development regulations. That's where we should have that discussion. I, I think you, you are right there. Thank you. So that's good, John. I'm done.
We have some housekeeping to.
Our next month's meeting.
Yeah, I am going to be unavailable. And I think that we need to probably still meet if we want to stay on track. So, and I forgot to run this by you, Greg, but I have four dates that are potential candidates. June eleventh, June eleventh, the thirteenth, fourteenth, and the twenty-eighth are all open in the evenings for this facility. All of them work fine for staff. I don't know what, Greg, what your obligations are.
You know, there might be, let me just look real quickly, but I have a thought. I think eleven, thirteen, and fourteen, fourteen is Flag Day. There might, I think any of them would work, John, but I think there might be an advantage and we could talk it through tomorrow. But the twenty-eighth could be in the middle of a CEPA comment period. And so we could schedule a public hearing for that night that might, timing-wise, work out really, really well. But maybe, so let's check to see with the commission if all four dates are good and then maybe we can come back and recommend a preferred one. But I could see that there might be some advantages to the twenty-eighth.
I have a graduation on the eleventh.
Okay. Anybody else?
Any of them work?
So which ones were the eleven, thirteenth, and twenty-eighth?
Eleven, thirteen, fourteenth, and twenty-eighth.
The, the only one that will work for me is the thirteenth, but I am not necessary. I will be leaving on vacation as well. And I have a prior commitment the evening of the eleventh.
You can't make the thirteen?
I'll do it.
The fourteen. Well, it looks like the twenty-eighth is probably the best date aside from Monty not being available. Well, we will figure that out. There are some workshops and stuff that the county's got going on and also, like Greg was saying, a public comment period and possibly having a public hearing on the twenty-eighth. So we will update you when we set a date. If that sounds good.
So this sort of seemed that everybody can attend the thirteenth, is that correct? And everybody but Monty can attend the twenty-eighth. So you kind of know what, it seems to be either the thirteenth or the twenty-eighth.
Okay. Well, hold those dates.
Okay, please. Not for too long, you know.
Right.
Especially when the summer coming.
All right, commission, anything else? It's late enough. Good, good choice. All right, nine o'clock, we're adjourned. Thank you.
I'm going to print, we did print off the minutes for you to sign.
I think I have them there.
Oh, do you have a copy?
I do not. Thank you. Sorry. I hope you need to sign your copy.